Motion supported by trustee Holmes. We'll do a roll call, please.
Roll, roll call be trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Protep Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. We have a resolution processed to determine South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority facility needs in front of us. Some may or may not be aware, but there's been a considerable amount of discussion amongst this team and the fire authority. And as of our last meeting, we felt it necessary to step out and take some matters into our own hands, but this is just a, an extension of that.
If it's okay, uh, President Protep Keller, being a representative on the fire authority, uh, worked with me on this resolution at the request of the council at the last meeting, so if, it's okay with President Frisbee if, if President Protep Keller can read the, the resolution.
He may, I'm not sure if he.
The drink's closed.
Village of Vicksburg Resolution 0620222-02, a resolution in support and honor of South Kalamazoo County firefighters. Whereas in emergency situations in South Kalamazoo County and within the Village of Vicksburg, employees of the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority, commonly called firefighters and/or fire chief, carry out the critical role of protecting and ensuring public safety. Whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council respects, appreciates, and acknowledges their efforts and accomplishments. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council is committed to ensuring these first responders receive all the resources they need to do their job. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council is committed to operating the best practices model of government. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council has committed to having a fully transparent government, which is focused on serving our citizens and visitors. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council has committed to having a process that is thorough and involving an opportunity for citizens' input. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council, which represents the residents of Vicksburg on the South County Fire Authority Board. And whereas the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority desires to initiate a process that identifies facilities, needs, and options for future facilities, locations. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council is committed to ensuring that the South, South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority is able to maintain the current location of South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority Station Number Two, the station here in, in Vicksburg, within the Village of Vicksburg for at minimum the next seven years. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg Council recommends via this resolution, the following process to ensure that the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority provides the optimum, optimum facilities and locations for the firefighters, a fire chief, while ensuring the opportunity for public input in a transparent manner. Step one, update the long-term capital planning document on the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority website. Step two, South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority Board of Review and Discuss CPSM report provided to the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority that provided information on current facilities. Step three, South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority Board, develop, distribute, and receive in return requests for a proposal for South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority facility needs. Step four, South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority Board, select best outstanding consulting company, outside consulting company to present a facilities need assessment to the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority. Now therefore be it resolved, the Village of Vicksburg Council does hereby adopt this resolution for providing a recommendation to the South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority for a process to identify the current and future South Kalamazoo County Fire Authority facility needs. I hereby certify that, that the foregoing is true and complete copy of a resolution adopted by the Vicksburg Village Council of Vicksburg on a, on a regular meeting held on June 20th, 2022. I will explain to the council what's going on with this. So I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna take my fire authority report now. So, we had a board meeting last week. Um, as all you know, we voted the week before, seven to nothing, to not support the potential purchase of property, which was approximately three miles east of Vicksburg on W Avenue. The vote ended up being three-three, which meant that it died. And to say that the members that were in support of it were a little agitated would be an understatement. So, um, their main concern was they were, they were still going back to last summer's social media posts that, that we were kicking the fire authority out of the station. Um, I repeated myself at least five times that, number one, um, and this went back to the story that the manager had had a, had a conversation with the chairman of the authority. And so I, I assured everybody that, number one, the village manager, which Jim knows I said this, works for the village council. The village council has absolutely nothing on the docket regarding that fire station, period, end of statement. I repeated myself five times that night, to the point where they finally, I think, understood that we as a council have, because we, the council, are the ones that make the decision on that, that building. Staff can recommend, that's fine, we're the ones that make the decision. And nobody on this board right now is in the position to do anything with the fire authority in that building. Um, beyond that, and I pointed out to them that, like in Schoolcraft, many residents of this community think of the fire department as the Vicksburg Fire Department. They don't look at it as South County Fire Authority, even though it is not part of Vicksburg, it is a separate entity. It's not like DPW or, or the Police Department. So we don't have direct control over the fire authority. We, we don't. I mean, that's a separate entity. So anyways, um, I'm not trying to get long-winded, but I felt it would be important and I, and I extended, extended to the board that the Village of Vicksburg with staff would help them in a process of doing this above board, out in the open and transparent, so that nobody could question the motives of anybody doing this. Um, so we thought it would be important that we draft a resolution in support as a council to say, we're willing to work with you, we're, we're willing to work with the authority. We want to help you, we want to make sure that this is done properly. So, um, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or, or staff can.
I'd just like to say that we absolutely need due diligence before we purchase property. That's just step one. I mean, to me, property and location, timeliness of response is one of the most critical factors in fire. And i- it's just surprising to me that we have anyone trying to buy property before even assessing the needs of the community that it's serving. So I, I think this is a wonderful resolution and it shows our support for the firefighters doing the job, but we need to get it done correctly if we are to do it at all, at a very large expense for every member of the association.
Just so the board is aware too, that I, I pointed out to the authority that, um, the authorities being a separate entity, they can go to the voters of the authority and put a bond out amongst all the voters of Waukesha, Prairie Round, Schoolcraft Township, Brady Township, Village of Vicksburg, Village of Schoolcraft. So it wouldn't be just a case that they would come to the Village of Vicksburg and say, you need to write us a check for whatever the amount is. They can, they can go out as an authority and, to the, to the voters and ask that question. So, yeah. Um, so they, they weren't aware of that.
If that was true, how would the money be processed then? Would it come from all the entities and how would that be handled?
Well, I'm not a tax, taxing authority, but I would assume if a special assessment is passed by the authority, the, the, the residents in those authorities would have a special assessment. There again, I'm not a tax expert.
No, it'd be on their tax bill. If, if approved by the majority of residents in the six entities, it would be on their tax bill, no different than like Kate Reese of the schools and processed through a taxing authority to distribute that amount of funded money to the fire authority.
So one thing that should give us all reprieve is that trustee Keller and another trustee out of Schoolcraft Township told them about their charter and showed them in their charter how it states it. And they were unaware of it, so there's a lot of work to be done. I'll leave it at that.
Carl, I appreciate this. I didn't quite understand it at first, but the more I read it, I, the big, the big part I like is the next seven years. That gives us breathing room. It gives the village, the townships, and the fire authority breathing rooms. We don't have to rush to go find a new building. So that part I appreciate. Um, my conversation with Tim yesterday, he stopped by the Vintage Market and we talked for quite a while. And, um, I don't think that Prairie Round should pay the same amount into this for a new building, new land as Vicksburg does. I think it's unfair to them. The way that the funding is set up and that Tracy Losi, she did a big demonstration a couple of years ago, is that Brady Township pays the most, uh, Schoolcraft Township, Vicksburg, Schoolcraft, and then Prairie Round and Waukesha. They're at the bottom. They, they don't have the funding in that that we have. We do pay a bigger percentage than they do. And when it comes to purchasing land or building the station, their funding should be based on, on that and that only. It's, it's, it's unfair to ask their residents to pool up the kind of money that Vicksburg can. So, um, having said that, I, I thank you for this documents there.
Well, as, as, as I just said, I'm not a tax expert and I'm not going to pretend to be, but I, I'm sure there would be some type of formulas, weighted formulas on the assessment. There again, I'm not an expert, but, um, I'm sure they can get attorneys involved in that and get that all figured out. But, and just so everybody, and, and just so, it says a minimum of seven years. So, you know, um, it, it really is kind of open-ended. And I did, I did speak with the chief personally after the meeting and assured him again that this has nothing to do with the firefighters. We, we support the firefighters and, and I want the best equipment that this authority can afford for them. But we just, we have to be more upfront and transparent and prudent with the money. And how we collect it and where we spend it and, and documentation. So that's, that's where we're, really where this is coming from on it, so.
And how we plan and how we save, right? I mean, why, why, I don't know. We said this last time, how do you go buy property when you don't even know what's going to go there? So, and there's been no funding down the road, there's no planning for 10 years, five years out. So I think those are all things that this, this group will get to here shortly.
Senator Frisbee, just a, a quick comment. From my perspective, uh, last council meeting, we asked for, for this to be written and this draft to be developed. And from my perspective, th- this actually meets and almost, and exceeds kind of my expectations. Really, I think, um, trustee Wagner's comment to me is, is the basis for this whole discussion we're having. Everything else is noise. Everything else is just propellers that are, that are in the wind. The bottom line is this, and that is you need to do a needs assessment in order to identify where the funds are going to go, period, period. If, if that's not done, the rest of this is, is just theater that we're doing. Let's all go to Facebook and have a good time. If not, why don't we, you know, conduct the needs assessment? And that's where I think it'd be great to have direction from staff, you know, as far as how we might be able to do that. I know, Jim, you, you've provided commentary regarding how a professional audit or survey might be able to be done. And I think that's something that, in listening to the discussions that we had, that I think this council would support. So, thank you.
Any other comments or discussions? If not, we have a, um, resolution in front of us. Entertained a motion to.
Uh, trustee Wagner, I will move to support Resolution 062022-02, a resolution in support in honor of South Kalamazoo County firefighters.
Trustee Holmes, I second.
Motion by trustee Wagner, second by trustee Holmes. Let's do a roll call.
Roll call, trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Protep Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. So it takes us on to village manager to report.
Yeah, the infrastructure project, uh, we obviously have continuing work that's being done on the Washington Street lift station, the large pipe down Washington and halfway out into Michigan. One of the things, credit goes to Randy, he, uh, wanted to ensure the appropriate safety valves were, were placed, um, on that lift station and the contractors ensuring that's in place until these, uh, needed parts that have been delayed in the supply chain arrive. So, so that's some of the work done and, and credit goes to Randy on that. Other stuff, uh, again, to just remind everyone, we're still on track. Hopefully it arrives, scheduled to arrive July 18th. Uh, the fencing that'll be placed in those four sections on Main Street and down on Prairie Street. Uh, there are some, and I didn't see, so look at Randy, I don't know if they got to them last week on Spruce Street, those.
All three of them are in.
Okay. There were some drainage issues on Spruce Street where the intersection arose. Two of those intersections, uh, we authorized, uh, what are those structures called? Exactly. Leachin basins have been put in. And then one down on, uh, Spruce Street where the water was collecting, like where people would park for the farmer's market and, in that. So hopefully those address those issues for those residents. And we're working right now on the, um, with the heat, we didn't feel the, the fireplace in Oswalt Park needed to be. So that's turned off right now and we're also, um, be it that it's new, determining, uh, the pressure of gas that goes in it. On our test runs, uh, the, it's a glass material that's on the bottom to look like charcoal. Um, it was, it was melting that glass, so we have to, we're figuring that out in the background right now. So, so those, I'll pause there if there's any questions on them, either Oswalt Park or the infrastructure. Oswalt Park's scheduled to have its final punch ticket walkthrough. I think it's the 28th or 29th, so, uh, we'll have that. DPW Pole Barn Building is, um, very, very disappointed in, in the contractor. I don't anticipate it being completed by June 30th. Uh, we did have insulation that will be blown in and the roof arrive. But, um, the contractor, uh, quite frankly, is good for a day or a day and a half a week. And, uh, still trying to get them back on scene to, to complete this, uh, job. So, um, we'll keep the council apprised as we go. But I do see us pushing some money into the 22, 23 fiscal year. More of a accounting maneuver, um, we might be discussing next week, uh, depending upon where we're at with that project. And then the only other item is we are coming up to, uh, our util, quarterly utility billing. And when we went through downtown and, um, had it, uh, replaced a lot of the, placed all the lines, the water lines, service lines going into, into businesses, uh, we didn't overlay at what the system was billing and, uh, what's called a meter equival, equivalency. And got advice on that. So there'll be nine different addresses that are impacted with increased, uh, base rates and equivalencies and three that'll be adjusted the other way. So those will be going out, uh, with the, to those specific entities. Not only in the mail, but I'll be making personal contact with each of them to, to explain those changes. But that, that will occur in the next, uh, mailings. And then, um, it's not on the agenda, but next week is the public notice to present the budget on the 27th. Um, Michelle and I, uh, talked today, we're into this thing. Depending upon where we're at the 27th has nothing to do with the 22, 23 fiscal year, but trying to close down the infrastructure and the timing of receiving USDA draws, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll notify the council probably prior to Monday night, but no later than Monday night, that of the need potentially of a special meeting the morning of the 30th. But it's all dependent upon, uh, waiting to receive funds on the USDA level and that. But, um, we want to make sure that that audit specific to, to, to the USDA, uh, we're on top of. And as I've said previously, I would recommend anyone in the future not have these projects close in the middle of your final month of a fiscal year, so. And a big shout out to Michelle.
Any questions for staff?
Jim, can you, um, I don't know if you can talk about it or not, can you give us an update on the observation deck at Clark Park? I know you sent out an email.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I apologize for actually not having that on. Um, I think it was Friday afternoon, uh, we, it was part, I had, um, Mike Frederick and his team looking at some different projects, uh, that's involving Parks and Rock. And kind of why we pushed Parks and Rec off till the 27th presentation to the council. Not only that deck, but, but the swim plat, or fishing platform in Sunset, the pavilion, the little pavilion over the, um, pond, kind of by Vickers there. But when they got underneath and, and when Mike, uh, took me a month and a half or so, he had talked about a real drainage issue there and kind of like the, the Leachin Basins, um, that as the drains on what would be the south side of that, he talked to six weeks that to do that right, you'd put a structure down there and get the water away from those pavilions. Well, over the course of time, uh, and whatever other factors, from six weeks ago to today, Mike noticed, uh, that two of the, the pillars, support pillars underneath had actually shifted. And we could see where they actually shifted. So we felt the most prudent course was, was to close it off, so people wouldn't be on it. Uh, the timing of it being last Friday and with the budget in that, uh, we are going to take the next 45 days. I envisioned the August meeting, council meeting, uh, to present to the council what options and staff's recommendation on short-term impacts and long-term solutions as it relates to that. But unfortunately, uh, we just felt out of, out of a abundance of caution for safety and what we saw on the movement of those pillars, it was best not to have people on it.
Yeah, I stopped down there and took a walk quick and it, it appeared that the pillars had moved.
Yeah.
So that was my concern. I was more afraid that the deck had moved instead of the pillars. But, uh, you know, I, from what I, I'm, I'm seeing, the deck didn't move, but you could most definitely see where the pillars had moved.
Yeah, we felt, there's work being done on related, uh, as part of the infrastructure project, it's replacing the wall on the creek side. So the boardwalk and that wall, once it's in place, will still be open. It's just going out on the platform and that. We wanted just to close it off, like I said, to take this kind of time to figure out our options. And if there's some short-term in, positive impact we can do to shore it up, but as well have a long-term solution.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me.
Any other questions or comments for staff? I appreciate the update, Jim. Thank you very much. We'll move on to committee reports. Anything new in the tree world?
Well, I talked with Mike today. We have not met. I'm, I'm pretty loud to begin with. And from what Mike told me, Jim and Mike and Charlie are going to kind of meet. And, um, apparently we can purchase 40 trees and with the money that we have. And that, as it looks right now, those trees are probably going to be planted the length of Prairie Street. So that will be something that everybody will be able to see. And our way to start, and I'm not exactly sure, uh, if they've even determined what type of trees are going to go there. Um, that will be what the meeting is all about, so. And hopefully that will happen soon.
I think part of that discussion led to, or came from, what could be the best visual impact for the village? I mean, if we put a tree here, a tree there, a tree there.
Right.
You know, if we, but i- if coming into the village and they see this project going on and, and it's visually, they're like, oh, we're doing something. So I think that's where that conversation and came to, came from.
I think that's absolutely right.
Yeah, next, next Monday and as part of the Parks and Rec budget will be, uh, staff's recommendation. It'll take council approval, but for $10,000 to start a tree program in the village. Mr. Wonderland, when I met with him, had several good talking points that I believe is going to get put down in paper for the residents when it's. Ultimately, their recommendation would come in front of the council for location and that. But he had very good talking points on the positiveness of a program like this, be it, starting with one specific street.
I think it makes a, uh, it will make a visual impact.
And, and I think the timing, so people are, if all the approvals take place in that, the plantings of the trees will be in the fall is what my understanding was the best time to plant them. But I know Mike will be on top of that with the committee.
He said that, he said that, um, after you meet with, uh, Charlie Krill, then he would come back to the committee and explain to what was happening, so.
Yeah, and another tree issue, um, I think it's Fourth Street by, uh, the industrial park, uh, where the power lines have been put in. Few of the pine trees have, have been cut down. Been working with AEP as well as some members of the industrial park. We do feel we have a game plan that, that can be carried out in that area to accomplish the trees that have grown to a height that are impacting that section of, uh, power lines. And the reality, those power lines are critical, uh, to, to the, a third of the Village of Vicksburg, um, in that area. That, um, the tree, we need to do, address something. So we're going to start with communicating with the neighbors there of what this game plan is and the timing of it. But the reality will be some of those larger trees will, will have to be replaced with a more specific tree, that will not grow past 25 to 27 feet. And those power lines are put up 32 to 35 feet, so. In case anyone asks when, when, because AEP's subcontractor wants to get moving on this.
Thank you for that update. Did we have a Parks and Rec update?
We'll be meeting the 27th and I'm not sure if we're meeting at six or seven, but, uh, I haven't looked it up.
It'd have to be six, because we're meeting at seven.
Is it seven? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's it. So we'll go over the budget for Parks and Rec on the 27th at six.
Well, the CATS is, uh, this Thursday, so we'll have an update at our next meeting. Uh, Planning Commission update?
It was last Monday and I actually had a, uh, an excuse absence, but it's, uh, really the meeting, my understanding, was really focused on the, uh, the, the budget recommendation for the Planning Commission and DDA for next fiscal year that was discussed. And I, I think as Jim, um, identified earlier, it was unanimous, um, approval of the budget. I'm not sure if there's any additional comments that either Michelle or Jim would like to have that.
Thank you. And, uh, South County, we, we had an update on the fire authority and, oh, you got more?
You just keep on giving, don't you?
Well, they, they were surprised that the meeting actually went past 20 minutes, so, uh, we were there over two hours, so. We did. We did approve to put out a request for quote for a new tanker. So that is being put together and I reached out with staff. They're going to share with the director of the authority kind of a, a format to use to put out for a request for quote. It's going to go out to several different manufacturers. It is not manufacturer-specific, it's a very generic spec so that no one manufacturer can be locked in and, and shut out the other manufacturers. I instructed the board that how this will work is that the bids are going to be sent out, they will, I, I believe they have to be received back by August 26th. And they are to be sealed, mailed in and sealed and to be remained sealed until the apparatus committee, which is myself and another board member, and then the fire chief and the two battalion chiefs. We will then meet and open those bids and then review the bids with the chief and the battalion chiefs. They're the ones that are going to be running this equipment. They should know whether these all, whether they meet what they want or not. And at that point then, we'll report back to the board on what the recommendation is from there. So we're just at step one, but letting you know at least they're, they're going to go out for, for quote on a tanker. The, the delivery time on these are anywhere from 18 months to two years. So it's not like you're going to go down and pick one out of the dealer lot, so just making you aware of it.
Thank you, Carl. And South County Sewer meets tomorrow morning at nine, so I can report back after that. Now we get to citizens' comments for non-agenda items. We can talk about anything you would like if the opportunity presents itself. So I see no one from the audience. Is there anyone online, Mr. Merrill?
We do have someone online, so if they wish to speak, appears it's on a computer. You just move your cursor and hit the raised hand sign that'll pop up there. If we see a raised hand, we'll go ahead and call. And while we're waiting, I, we'll probably be placing a brownfield meeting for next Monday. It should be rather short, very few budget amendments within this fiscal year and setting up next fiscal year. We were going to do it tonight, but our other two members wouldn't be present, so I felt it would be best to wait till next week where, where we have them part of that quick conversation. So just to give a heads up on that.
Jim, would we have that wrote because it was mentioned, that's why it popped in my head, that Parks and Rec, we're going to meet at six?
Yeah, I'll talk to the chairperson of Parks and Rec, Chad Kissinger. He and I spoke a while ago about what was coming up on the 27th, so we'll see what direction he'd like to go.
What time are we meeting?
Well, we meet at seven and we have a quick meeting on the brownfield in probably 20 minutes for that.
Yeah. Yes.
So we plan on 6:30 being here?
Okay.
So we'll move on to trustee's time. Why don't you start with trustee Merrill?
I'll pass.
Trustee Holmes?
No comments, but would just like to make the team aware that we've got a lot going on next Monday and unfortunately, I have a planned elective surgery next Monday and I apologize, I'm not going to be able to be here, but I'll be with you in spirit though.
It was quite funny when you had that realization the other night that, oh, that meeting, oh, my surgery.
I, I've rescheduled this four times and I, I don't think fifth time will be the charm, charm with this doctor, so I'm, I think I'm sticking to it if I, if I could, President Frisby.
No, well, we appreciate it and we appreciate all you do for this, this team here and, and the fact that you do engage all the way up to this point. So a lot of what we do next week is semantics because we already had a lot of discussions leading up to it, so thank you for letting us know. Trustee Reaster?
I'm good.
Trustee Wagner?
Good this evening, thank you.
Trustee Olson?
One other point that got brought up during the fire authority meeting the other night is our fire calls are up. They've been averaging 100 a month. Last month was 122 plus. So Gail, please stay out of the heat. On Friday, I'm going to Van Buren County over at Hartford and I'm going to stop and check in with the Van Buren County Historical Society. Some of you might have noticed, they took a direct hit the other day with a storm. Their roof landed in the gully down the road, so, and I, I saw more pictures today. They have a massive hole in the side of their building. They're trying to raise $10,000 to help pay for the damage and I think they're over $4,000 now. We're going to stop and see what we can do to help set up some fundraising for them. And lastly, my anniversary with my wife Karen is now a national holiday. So yesterday, we celebrated 14 years together and had a very nice evening out, so. Yeah, if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be the man I am today, so, which is good or bad, but thank you very much.
Congratulations, Dave.
We don't know who to blame.
President Protem Keller?
I think I've spoken enough tonight, so I think I'm good. Thank you.
And, and myself, I think, I, I just want to thank the staff for their diligence and keeping track of all these numbers. I know there's probably times that your heads just are about ready to explode, especially with the infrastructure coming together. So I think, Jim, you stated, oh, well, you learned a lesson, don't ever take on too many projects at once, but I do appreciate, you know, your, your due diligence, you're not ignoring anything, you're staying above it and thank you all to the, to the entire team, DPW. Alex, you know, you do a, a, a whirl of good for me, you know, you're my, my voice of reason. I bounce things off you all the time, so I, I just appreciate the entire team that's been assembled in this community, so thank you very much. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Reaster's support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Have a good evening, Vicksburg.